Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Vedder.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Homan.
Present.
Commissioner DeBross.
Here.
So different. We'll begin this session with a monthly report from the Commissioners Committee on Fire Training.
Good afternoon. My name is David Roth. I'm here with the Fire Training Committee. I don't know if we all want to introduce ourselves. I'm here with Jerika Drapp, Nancy Roof, and Joe Thompson. Jim Roth is absent tonight. Pretty much tonight, we're not going to spend too much time talking about all the things that have happened since our last update. But we did want to talk about some of the needs that we feel that the group has. Starting first, we wanted to talk about interviewing individuals and some of the needs that we have as a group and concerns that we have as a group. And so for that, I'm going to turn it over to Jerika, and she'll discuss that.
Hi, Jerika Drapp. So as being a part of the committee, we've been doing a due diligence of going through a lot of the documents that Frank Petruzio and others have provided us, as well as citizens. The next step where we're really at is we want to get a perspective and information and beliefs from those that were involved from 2017 to current day in any capacity from the city. So one being the city manager, you know, the fire, chief fire, and as well as many others that were involved throughout those years. We have been facing some obstacles to do this. And so I guess our goal today in raising that to you guys is to ask for your help in some manner. To just, we, we have not successfully interviewed anyone from the city yet. So we originally started with the city manager reaching out. That interview was scheduled. And then day of, he ended up canceling it, so, which was supposed to be held with Nancy and David who are behind me. So that was one example of just some of the obstacles we're facing. And we feel like we need this information to make the most comprehensive and cohesive report out without being able to talk to some of the city employees or those that were previously a city employee that were involved. It's going to leave a lot of holes in our report. Is there anything else that I'm missing that I should be adding here?
The only things I would add are, we, as a group, you know, because we're subject to the sunshine laws, if three of us or more are together, then there has to be a public meeting. So, you know, it has to be open to the public. Some individuals may not want to be interviewed publicly, which is fine. But the problem is, you know, it becomes harder when the interviews are not done publicly. Because, you know, ideally, if it's not a public interview, we'd be able to record. That way, we can go back and take proper, accurate notes and add those quotes or, you know, add that to the report. Our interview with the city manager, just so everyone's aware, it was supposed to occur Wednesday. I think it was a Wednesday, May 22nd. And we were going to meet at four o'clock here at the city building. It was just going to be Nancy and I and the city manager and Frank Petruzio. And I got a call that day from Frank, and he let me know that the meeting was canceled.
Did they say anything else? They say anything else? Did he say he would answer questions?
Yes. So questions would be answered from the city manager or any city employee in writing only. So we would have to submit our questions via email or some format like that for a written response.
And not just for Mr. Obadourfer, but all city employees?
Correct.
No one-on-one, no person-to-person interviews?
So what we are asking the commission is, you know, it would be ideal if we had support and the ability to interview in person any city employees. That's the support that we're asking for. Because it will help us and it will help our report, and it'll help us get to a clearer picture. Because it's hard just to submit questions in writing and not, you know, not be able to-
But the writing question, the written questions are a record, written record that they're held to, right?
Correct. They could be helpful, but it would be more helpful if we were able to ask follow-up questions or probe a little bit more.
Were you told that you couldn't ask follow-up email questions?
We were not told that, but we just believe as a group that we would like to conduct interviews in person.
Can I add something? So I, I think the offer to do an email write-up is, is valid. We will take that, you know. However, from a research perspective, I do research as a full-time job. And from a research perspective, you lose a lot of tone and the way that they're, you know, maybe enunciating certain words without having that in face-to-face conversation. I mean, even think of us all through COVID when we're doing Teams meetings versus in, in person. What everyone lost just being remote. So from a research perspective, I appreciate and I understand that we, we would still do the written questions. I just feel like we still lose a lot of context around those responses without an in-person interview.
Did they provide any reasoning for the change in policy or wanting to switch over from in-person to written?
I just know from a phone call that I had with Frank, just that maybe there was some uncomfort, discomfort from the city manager to sit down with Nancy and I. To be honest, I'm not sure. And that's probably not an answer that should come from me, if I'm being honest.
Couldn't you guys elaborate a little bit more on what you think might be gained from a non-recorded in-person interview that you can't accomplish via text?
I think just to get back to what Jerika was saying, it's just, it's more helpful to sit down and, you know, we could submit, you know, we probably have a list of, you know, 300 questions, you know, and we could submit all those. But I think, you know, having a discussion adds so much more breadth to the interview. And I think you just can get so much more as opposed to just, you know, shooting off emails and, you know.
If I may, I, you have roughly 300 questions?
It, it's over a couple hundred, yeah.
Well, I can tell you personally that if I knew someone wanted to sit down with me and had over 200 questions, I would be a little hesitant to walk in that room as well.
We didn't know that, and we weren't going to have him answer 300 questions in an hour.
Correct. We obviously narrowed that down substantially.
So I guess the point that I'm getting at is you obviously have a list of these questions that you would like asked and answered.
Correct.
Correct.
Roughly 200 or so.
300.
Approximately.
300, 400, 500, whatever the number is. But there's a list of several hundred questions that you would like asked.
Correct.
Okay. So throwing it out there as a possible solution here. Why don't we begin the process by submitting the ones that you have to get the ball rolling on those answered? And then once those are answered, for any follow-up questions or anything that you would like to dive in deeper, then that's when we would look to having some type of personal interaction. I mean, would that be agreeable to the committee?
It would not to me.
I ask for the committee.
Yeah, I'm speaking for one of the committee.
Yeah, I think we'd have to talk about it as a group.
Okay.
I, I think it would be more helpful if, once the initial batch of questions was answered via email. Maybe if you, right now, it seems like there's a theoretical thing that might be missed if the interview's not conducted verbally in person. I think it might be easier if you guys came back after you had submitted those questions in writing. If the answers were submitted back in writing, if you could then compile, here's where we think the gap is and here's where we think, maybe a more focused interview on these specific topics instead of everything. Maybe, maybe that'd be a little bit more of a, you know, narrow focus. As Commissioner DeBross mentioned, if somebody comes at me with a pretty wide bank of 300 questions, that might seem like, okay, well, I don't know where this is going to go. If after those questions were answered, you guys can narrow it down. Okay, I really want to focus on this time period or this event. Maybe, maybe then that would be something that certain employees, maybe Mr. Obadourfer, might be more interested in participating in.
And I'm also having a little bit of a difficult time too about the, the request or the adamancy of having the interview done publicly. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't there an issue with having your meetings publicly recorded? Did we not have a fiasco over that?
Well, to be clear, we don't have any problem, I don't think, with any of our interviews being not public. Ideally, I mean, you would think that, just being transparent, you would think that, you know, being a committee formed by the commission, we would have the full support of city employees. But we don't, as a group, you know, have an issue if someone doesn't want to be interviewed publicly. We can't fault them for that. But, and as far as our meetings and being recorded, you know, we as a group discussed, you know, the fact that, you know, the interview with the city manager was canceled after, you know, our meeting. Our la, our, I forget what the date was, but the 16th, that meeting. Does that have anything to do with it? I don't know. But I would say, you know, about our committee, you know, I know there's people that, there's talk of, you know, conduct and such at these meetings. But I think it's important to note that, you know, there's a lot of people in this town that care about what happened. And they're passionate about it, like, you all know, they're extremely passionate.
I wholeheartedly understand that. I guess my question is with, we all recognize that there are a lot of people in town who are passionate about this, who really care about it and who want to follow along with this, which is one of the reasons why this committee was created. My question is, why was the decision made to stop recording your meetings?
The, so the decision was made by the committee to stop recording our meetings because we were afraid that the discussions that were occurring in our meetings would dissuade individuals from wanting to be interviewed.
Why, why would that be?
Just because we as a group are talking about individuals. You know, some of our comments might be speculative. And our, our intention is to not dissuade anybody from talking to us. You know, we would like to talk to as many people as we can.
Can't those individuals who might feel uncomfortable have a two-on-one meeting with you, just like the interviews?
Correct. Yeah, and that was-
Then part of what we wanted was the transparency from you guys as well, so that the public could see what it is that you're talking about.
Correct. At our last meeting, we did vote to start recording.
Yes, you did.
So we will-
Thank you.
-be recording our meetings going forward.
That's appreciated.
The, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword.
It is.
I mean-
You're in a tough spot.
Yeah, right.
Trust me, nobody understands it better than us.
We really are between a rock and a hard place. I mean, we, we want full transparency. We want people, there's people that can't come to the meetings that are passionate about what's going on. And I know the discussions can be lively at times, but I think what's good about our committee is that we're giving people a voice, you know. And I know they come here and they can talk, but they only get five minutes. And I know that a lot of the discussion, I think, is, it's just a lot of passion from a lot of individuals and-
Do you think that allowing that conversation to happen in your meeting at that might be a balance between your perceived neutrality and the outlet for the community?
I'm not sure I understand.
Do you think that, you said that there's a lot of passion at your meetings. Do you think that allowing that passion to occur unrestricted, that, that might affect your perceived neutrality as an organization or as a committee?
I, speaking just for myself, I don't think so. Because if there, you know, anybody with any opinion can come to our meeting and voice their opinion and how they feel. You know, we have no problem with that, you know, and I would encourage that. You know, it'd be great if more people came to our meetings and voiced how they felt and-
The feedback I've received from members of the community has been that that has affected their perception of the committee as, as neutral. I know that there was some, been some discussion that you guys have reined in, how the meetings have gone. Certainly, the last few meetings have been a little calmer than previous meetings. But I think that that earlier meeting conduct, I think that that affected you guys. And that's not saying that's your fault, but that's just, that's just how perceptions work.
I think, you know, we're a young committee.
Yeah.
Figuring a lot of this out in real time. But, you know, I think it's great that people come to our meetings and talk. And, you know, it can get lively, but, you know, I think that's, you know, it's their right to express themselves. Now, do we work on a code of conduct and all of that? Yes. And then we take that seriously and we want to be taken seriously as a group. And part of that, yeah, is conducting ourselves professionally at all of our meetings. Like I said, you know, we're, we're figuring things out in real time.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
What about the perception of you as commissioners and the city staff who stay mute when the community comes to talk to you about this issue? And now will not allow us to have one-on-one interviews with city staff? We're a city committee. You created us. The assumption is you want to know what happened. Something went wrong, either through ignorance or malfeasance. We want to know what.
Do you think it's acceptable for committee members to socialize with other people after, after your committee meetings?
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
I'm hearing that, and that's, that's a concern to me.
I do that. I have no problem with it. If city staff came to the meeting, I'd socialize with you as well.
There's been a lot of discussion about the camera that's in the room with you guys. Is there, is there any questions you have about how that camera works? Are any concerns about that?
We're figuring that out. I mean, all the meetings that we've been to, except for the last two, we just walk in the room and the, the TV is on, and I assume that the camera is on as well. We have not been hitting record. I mean, it's usually just recording. The first few meetings, it was, it was literally a Teams meeting, and I'm not sure whose account it was. I don't, I don't know if it was Mark Newman's account or how it was set up. But that is another thing that we're figuring out in real time, and there's, you know, technical issues and-
I, I know there is concern brought up by the public about the camera lens moving around a little bit. Is that something that you guys have some confusion about or any clarity on, or is this something that you guys have figured out or?
If you have answers on that, we were assuming that it's just, you know, kind of a smart camera that kind of tracks movements of individuals.
Yeah, that, yeah, because there's been a lot of discussion about that camera and a 30-second Google search for that camera model. It's very expensive, but it's like a $900 auto-tracking corporate camera. So in case anybody was curious about that, it's, it's just one of those smart AI things, and it just auto-tracks on whoever's talking.
Yeah, nobody's controlling it. Nobody's watching. Well, citizens are watching, hopefully, your meetings. But you guys are there to be neutral and to gain information, and we understand that. And so by being neutral, you don't presuppose that there's malfeasance or anything. You're there to gather the information to, to figure that out.
Right, I agree. I think part of that was, we were hoping that, you know, I think we as a group definitely thought that we would be able to sit down with at least city employees and have discussions. I was hoping that I'd come down here and have this full support of the commission, but-
You definitely have mine. Emails are all great, but you lose a lot of tone in emails. Also, you lose body language. If there's anything I've learned in this room, it's how to read body language. You can tell when people are engaged. You can tell when people are ordered aside. You can tell when people are angry. You can tell when people are sad. So I, I don't know what I can do individually to see to it that you get those, but I hope you do.
Do you guys think that tone and body language and demeanor would play a significant role in the final report?
The demeanor of-
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's the discussion is that the, the thing that would be missing between an in-person interview and written questions is tone and body language. Do, do we think that tone and body language would end up being a significant part of the report or the facts?
No, I don't necessarily think, and I'm just speaking for myself. I don't necessarily think that, you know, body language would impact the results of the report. But, you know, not being able to probe and ask follow-up questions and, I mean, I don't know.
I still, I still think that you guys probably ask follow-up questions via email. You know, as those questions go back and forth, and it could be an ongoing dialogue. Do you guys have, how, how many other people are you guys trying to interview? I, I know that your focus right now is on the city manager, but how many other people have you guys tried to interview? Or how many people are on the list?
We don't have a list yet.
Well, a working list. I think all of us have individual lists, but, yeah, there's probably at least a dozen individuals.
Do you think that maybe some progress can be made with other interviews?
Yeah, for sure. Hopefully. I mean-
Most of those have to go through Frank.
What's that?
Most of our requests for interviews have to go through Frank, so Frank says.
Which I believe may veer into one of your other questions that you had for us tonight.
Right. So going along with, you know, our sunshine laws and the things of that sort, you know, Frank is our liaison to the city commission. But we have had legal questions come up during the course of our meetings. And we were, we are talking about, you know, exploring the idea of seeking outside counsel for ourselves just so we can answer our own questions that we have. Really, I mean, because if you think about it, you know, all, all of our meetings are public and we have to just talk publicly, you know. And some of what we say, you know, we just want to protect ourselves. And we want to be able to answer questions, I guess, that the public might have or that we might have as best to our abilities. And we just think that, you know, having our own counsel that we can reach out to for our legal questions would be helpful for us. So we would be asking the city commission to allow us to start down that path.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I've got the ordinance, which I voted on, that helped create your committee. And in section five, we have, the committee will further have the ability to engage with third-party experts or counsel as necessary with the approval of the city commission. So that appears to have been-
How's everybody feeling on that?
A request that was-
It's reasonable.
Predicted.
Yep.
I suppose we would have to figure out some mechanism by which we could actually-
Frank, how would we go about doing that?
I mean, they do it a couple ways. David may have some resources where he can reach out to somebody that is familiar with the questions that they may want to answer and present it to the commission. The commission would have to approve the hiring of the person for the committee.
Yeah, it'd essentially be like a ad hoc budget request. So if you guys came back in two weeks, week with somebody in mind, I, I don't exactly know how that would work in particular, but maybe they could start with like a bucket of hours or something of that nature to give us some cost mechanism that's bounded in some way. As more is needed, as more is justified, we can kind of continuously revisit that. That was one of the things about your committee is that you don't have a unlimited budget. Every little thing that you guys do has to come back before us. But that kind of aids with the transparency. But as, as we're willing, it sounds like we're willing, and it's in the, in the ordinance here and the resolution here, so.
Yeah, obviously, you know, we're, you know, very aware that, you know, this is, you know, taxpayer money and we would be as frugal as possible. And if we could find an attorney that would do this pro bono, then heck.
Oh, sure. Understood.
I, I think, you know, it sounds like you guys would, the commission would be okay if we searched for the attorney and presented that individual to you. And, you know, we could get hourly rate, things of that sort, and provide that, present that to you.
I just wanted to address with you guys and the public at large, just kind of the issue with privacy and transparency. And you're bound to sunshine laws and, and things of that nature. So when the commission created you, the city commissions, a city body, we are unable to create anything but more city. There's, there's no other way for us to make something that's wholly independent from the city, because we are the city. So by that very nature, your committee is stuck to city things and is regulated as though it's part of the city, because it is. And so there's a whole bunch of state law, there's a whole bunch of federal law that governs those sorts of things.
Sunshine.
Sunshine laws and some other things. And so that's not, that's not meant to try to hamper you. It's just, that's the best we could do. If we could have made a fully independent committee, well, you guys don't necessarily need us for that because there's nothing preventing members of the public from spontaneously forming their own groups and meeting in private and doing whatever they want. That, so by the nature of it being something that the city created though, you guys have lost certain privileges that you might have retained if you were just a regular assemblage of private citizens. So again, that's not meant to hamper you. It's just the nature of it. You know, should anybody want to, and we, we explained this before we created you guys as well, is that if anybody, there's nothing stopping anybody from meeting, in fact, many people did, just meeting on your own. But we wanted to, as the commission, we wanted to get a group together to figure out what would happen, and that's you guys. And just, you guys are- Um, and just, you guys are stuck to the same state and federal laws that we are.
Anything else?
I don't know if anybody else has any other comments. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation brief by Main Street Pickwa. It's a recap by Stacy Roth.
Hi.
A lot of Roths in the room.
I know. I don't even know who that guy is. He's not related to me. Um, I am Stacy Roth. I am the new executive director for Main Street Pickwa. I started in February. And, uh, I'm still here. Nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you.
Um, and I just wanted to go over, uh, a few things. Uh, first off, uh, on May seventeenth, we had Taste of the Arts, the kickoff to all the summer fun festivals. And, uh, it was wonderful. It did not rain. The sun was shining, uh, one of our best years yet. And I specifically want to thank, uh, so many of the city workers in public works, streets, parks, uh, the guys that, you know, brought the special events trailer down, helped unload it. Wonderful electric, electric distribution department. Those guys are amazing. We had an electric issue where the stage didn't have the right plug. They came down and fixed it. Wonderful. Um, and just, you know, all the guys that were on the ground helping out that day. It was wonderful. And, uh, the guys that were closing the streets, I really appreciate every one of them. Um, and they were all doing it with a smile on their face. I, I fed them pizza too, so.
That was very nice. I love that.
Anyway, and, um, then we also have the farmer's market. Um, we've had two weeks of the farmer's market and I really appreciate, uh, the guys that come out and close the streets for that and help me out, um, with that. And so I just wanted to give a shout out publicly, uh, because not everybody has Facebook, um, to the, the city and the guys on the street. They're, they're amazing. And then, um, I wanted to give you an update on the Mills Brothers mural. Uh, we have reached our goal, so, um, our fundraising goal, thanks to, uh, Lorna Swisher and Ruth Kuhn, our, uh, fundraising experts on that and the, uh, city, um, uh, the community members. Anybody who donated to the, the Mills Brothers, thank you so much. It is greatly appreciated. And then, of course, um, the Duke Foundation, uh, Pickwa Community Foundation and Miami County Foundation. Um, and of course, I gave you all my card. And so if you ever want to talk to Main Street about what we're doing downtown, just give me a call or an email. I would be happy to update you and sit down and chat.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, Stacy, and welcome.
Thank you. Wonderful. You guys have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Consent ag- the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes for the May twenty first, twenty twenty four regular city commission meeting. Resolution seventy-nine, twenty-four, resolution appointing a member to the hid- city historic review commission. Eighty, twenty-four, a resolution appointing a member to the city historic review commission. Eighty-one dash twenty-four, a resolution appointing a member to the his- city historic review commission. Resolution eighty-two dash twenty-four, a resolution appointing a member to the city historic review commission. Res- eighty-three dash twenty-four, a resolution appointing a city commissioner to the city historic review commission. A re- uh, um, eighty-four dash twenty-four is a resolution appointing a representative from the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District to the city historic review commission. And lastly, resolution eighty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution appointing a member to the planning commission.
Alright, can you tell us who was appointed to the historic review commission?
Okay, if you approve the consent agenda, the first resolution is, um, person appointed is Gene Franz. The second is Rich Sprags. Third is James Oda. Fourth, Ja- Brad Bupp. The, um, eighty-three dash twenty-four is the city commissioner, which I still need to, that needs to be discussed and appointed on the floor, I guess. And then Melanie Walker is the representative from the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District. I believe a couple of them are here.
What about eighty-five?
Yeah, what about eighty-five?
I'm sorry. Eighty-five is Micah Underwood.
Call him Dash, yes.
Mayor, um, for resolution R dash eighty-three, twenty-four, appointing a city commissioner to the historic review commission, uh, I would like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Vedder, uh, Vice Mayor Vedder, um, actually, uh, to that position. Um, I think his experience, um, with various historic aspects around the city, um, his general involvement, um, with things of that nature, highly qualify him for that position. Um, he's expressed interest in it. I've talked with him about it. I think he'd make a great, uh, commissioner representation on that, uh, committee.
Uh, motion was made. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yep.
Um, I actually had requested.
You did request, but we, they have to vote. They have to vote.
Well, I guess not. So I guess, yeah, I'm going to vote nay. There's going to be four ayes, one nay.
I did not vote.
Huh?
I did not vote for it.
Oh, okay.
So there's two. It's three and two.
Thank you.
So.
Would you like a roll call or?
You do a roll call, sure.
Mayor Lee.
Nay.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Nay.
Commissioner Homan.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros.
Aye.
Alright.
So the motion to nominate Commissioner Vedder, passed.
Okay, so, um, the people who are here for, for the downtown, uh, historic commission, uh, city historic review commission, would anybody like to speak about your appointment? No? Then I'll take a motion. Oh, go right ahead, Melanie.
Come on up.
Melanie Walker, five-two-six North Wayne Street. I just want to thank y'all for letting the Caldwell District to be, have their own representative. Um, there's a lot of different things that happen in our neighborhood versus everywhere else, and so I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Awesome.
You're welcome. Alright, with that said, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Moving on to old business. Ordinance number O dash seven dash twenty-four, a third reading.
And ordinance repealing and replacing Pickwa Municipal Code Section thirty point oh one.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this ordinance, uh, amends section thirty point oh one of the city code to allow the city manager to approve, um, claims against the city up to the legal limit for appro- um, bidding contracts. Um, this is the third reading and there were not any changes since the last reading.
Uh, Mayor, I would like to discuss an amendment to this ordinance.
I have one myself.
Okay, so, uh, there's been a lot of discussion amongst various members of the community because there's such a dramatic jump in this. Um, and so while the jump does get us to what is, uh, at the state level, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. O'Brien, at the state level, the seventy-five thousand is, is recognized as, that's, that's kind of the good, the good number to have. Um, it's the appropriate number to have. Um, and one of the reasons why there's such a dramatic jump is just because we haven't visited this section of the code in, in many, many years. Um, so I think to try to strike a balance, uh, between concerns from the community, uh, with that being too big a jump and balancing that with the recommendation from the state that seventy-five thousand is the appropriate amount, um, I am going to propose an amendment that caps that, that allows for seventy-five thousand per incident, um, though a cap of two hundred thousand dollars per calendar year. So that that might be, that ability might be exercised a few times, though if it starts getting out of hand, which seems to be the concern from the public, that that is just too much money, um, that the, that we would hit the cap amount and that anything in addition to that cap would then have to be, come to the committee, or sorry, come to the commission for approval. Um, so with that, um, I will move to amend.
If you hold on, I want to add something to that so we can just have one amendment.
Okay.
Alright, I've also gotten several, uh, people call and ask about it. With that, would it be possible, Commissioners, if we add, uh, a monthly report from the city manager about those type of expenditures? If there are none, he tells us there's none. If there are some, we get a monthly report. Would that be a problem, Paul?
No, I can include it in the agenda packet for the last meeting of the month.
And make it public so that citizens can see it. You, can you wrap that into yours?
Yes.
Just add a mo- monthly report to it.
Yes. Um, does anybody else want to discuss that before I make the amendment? Um, does anybody else from the city have any comments on that as, as it being an issue or anything?
Commissioner, I, I would suggest that be amended as follows. After Exhibit A, to not exceed a cumulative amount of two hundred thousand dollars per year.
Awesome. And then can we?
And would then add section two, uh, the city manager shall, any amounts paid shall be reported to Commissioner by the city manager in a monthly report.
Alrighty, uh, I so move to amend it as such.
Alright. What, any citizens, let, let's, any citizens have any comment?
Kim Heisler, um, I do have comments. And did you guys all receive the letter that I wrote today? That I sent late last night? Did you all have a chance to read it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So with that, in the state that our city is in right now, um, where there's so many questions and stuff like that, I'm going to say no. Don't even approve that what you just amended, two hundred thousand. You guys had said in the meeting before that it's very minimal that you go ma- over that amount. So isn't it your duty a- and is that too much to ask to continue that? Um, anyways, again, I say no. Um, what it does, even with the two hundred thousand is, and, and putting it in writing so that we get to see it, it's after the fact. It's like the burning thing. If you don't have a high enough value, um, for catching them for doing it wrong and they've done it wrong, it's past, y- you can't take it back. Um, but it encourages fraud. Even though you cap it, it still encourages still up to seventy-five thousand. With one level improvement, it only keeps the government big and we're trying to make it smaller. We're, we're small. Um, it also encourages theft, abuse and fraud. Um, and there's no transparency. And, I mean, I hope you guys can see that because it's, um, and the state of Ohio is so much bigger than the city of Pickwa. So of course, their max amount is going to be so much more. We're just a small portion of the state. So we don't need it any bigger than it is. And just because the Ohio revised code says that you can go up to seventy-five thousand as a max, it's only stating that with that, you can only increase three percent a year. So even going back those twelve years that it wasn't updated, where it was just sitting lax, three percent for twelve years only takes it up to thirty-eight hundred dollars per incident. And, uh, consider this, so twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand, regardless if it's one occurrence, two occurrence, or three, however many, up to two thousand, two hundred thousand, as you suggest, that's like three thousand percent increase. Who wants to give that power to one person? Regardless, maybe he does a great job, but maybe not. Don't you guys want to kind of keep tabs on that? Because I don't think I'm the only one, I don't think I'm the only citizen that's looking at this like, wow, okay, they amended it up to two hundred thousand, but still that leaves it wide open for huge amounts of, um, questions, um, and finding out after the fact. I mean, we're taxpayers. It, it matters to me if my water bill goes from one to two units because it's twenty dollars difference. I take notice and you're going to allow seventy-five thousand, uh, three, which is way more than the twenty-five hundred that was there before. So, and it's like ask, your child asking for allowance and going from five dollars and saying, hey, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, can I, can I have a hundred and fifty? Can we up that to a hundred and fifty? It's huge. Don't you ask a lot of questions? To me, it's like black and white and it should be for you guys. Um, even successful corporations don't do it. They're, they cap their petty cash to two hundred and fifty with many multi-level approvals to curb unnecessary spending.
This isn't petty cash, though.
I know it's not petty cash, but you guys said yourself the other day that, um, last time, that, you know, say for instance, it's a mirror on a car and prices go up. I get that. Prices are a lot more expensive than before. But if you allow that to go from twenty-five hundred, say, uh, you know, who's to say whoever's writing the check, there's not something nefarious going on where, you know, a damaged mirror turns into a new car for somebody because they have friends in the business. I mean, it, I'm not saying it's happening. I'm just saying it's suspect. Why is it happening now? Who initiated it? And those questions, do you guys know who initiated this to pass and why it needs to pass right now?
I believe our, uh, finance.
Yeah, but Mr. O'Brien, I, I believe you've been, as part of your new position, I, I, you've been here for several months now, but you've, you've been kind of combing through our policy and looking for places where it's substantially out of date. Is that, is that not correct?
Yeah, so the, so I had a discussion with, uh, Frank and brought it to my attention that this was, uh, you know, been on the books this way for quite a few years. Um, and I'd just like to say a couple of things. First of all, uh, this would not really give the city manager any authority that it doesn't already have concerning other contracts. So, and then the, um, the other thing to keep in mind is, uh, a lot of these types of claims would be through insurance claims. So we would not typically pay out, say, fifty grand on a damage claim out of the city funds. That would typically be an insurance claim, uh, which would be, you know, supported by documentation with the insurance company and.
And they'd have an adjuster come out and kind of look around as, I mean, uh, insurance fraud's a pretty big problem, but there's adjusters that come out to try to mitigate that. We'd be subject to that same, same thing, right?
Correct. And also, there are other checks and balances even here at the city with, with any expenditure. Uh, no one in the city is allowed to just write a check without proper documentation. So when that comes through for a check issuance, uh, for, requests came through for a check, uh, and the larger, the more questions it would raise, uh, without some kind of documentation and proof as to why we were making this expenditure.
Jerry, can you, can you explain that a little bit more in depth? Um, and, and I'm going to help you get to where I'm going by a couple of questions.
What, you mean how?
Yeah, no, hold on. I have a question for you.
Okay, sure.
Do you have a checkbook for the city of Pickwa?
You mean, what do you?
A checkbook that you can pull out of your pocket right now, right?
No, no, we, that is, uh, all done through the accounts payable function of the city. Um, we have a person that, that handles check requests and reviews the documentation. It's also, uh, looked through by the accounts, uh, accounting manager. Uh, so we have procedures in place for reviewing and, and processing checks. So the city, even the city manager can't just order up a check.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. That leads me to my next question. Mr. Obendorfer, do you have a checkbook for the city of Pickwa? Can you just write a check for?
I do not.
Okay. Now, Jerry, what is the process to settle an insurance claim or for any expense that would be covered under this ordinance? Because now we're not talking about a contract, um, to do paving or to repair manholes, um, or for supplies at the water treatment department, correct? We're talking about specific insurance claims that this.
We're talking about specific insurance claims that this city would need to settle. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay, now what is that process when we get the claim and it needs to be settled? How do we go about cutting that check? Does Paul just walk in and sign a check?
Well, he would, he would review the case, review the documentation and decide whether it was a legitimate claim or not. And then a check request would be, and I assume in many cases or all cases, Frank would also be involved with that, but Frank would have to speak to that. But then the check request would be made to finance and we would require any documentation to support that expenditure before we cut the check.
So there is still a two-step process there where even if Mr. Obendorfer wanted to send a check to somebody for an claim, no matter what he does, because he doesn't have a personal checkbook for the city, he can only run it through that system. And that system's set up to bounce it to you for approval. Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Also, another step in the process is no check can be issued from the accounting system without that party being set up as a vendor in the accounting system. And that would require, you know, W-9 and, and any information that we deem necessary to properly set that person up as a vendor. So that is another step and that step is done by a person who is not responsible for cutting checks. So that is another segregation duties to ensure that vendors in the system are legitimate vendors.
And part of that segregation of duties is that you can deny that request as the financial director?
Yes, I actually, and that, I have the authority in the charter and as a matter of course in public finance, the finance director has that authority and even not only authority but responsibility. So if there's a check, an expenditure that would be questionable or not for a public purpose, yes, I certainly have the duty to not issue that check.
And should anything go wrong in that process, of course, the state of Ohio has the ability to come back and audit those books as well, correct?
Yes, we are subject to a yearly audit. The other thing is if, if there is an expenditure that turns out to be not for a public purpose and was deemed fraudulent, that would come back on the parties responsible. For in the case of the city manager, it would come directly to him as a findings for recovery. If I'm not diligent in my job as a finance director to make sure that didn't happen, then I could also be named in that findings for recovery. And that is a personal liability to be paid by us, back to the city.
Do, do we have one of the big four? I don't know if it's four, gone down to three yet. Do we have one of the big four accounting firms as kind of our checks and balances for auditing us or at least advising?
We do not. We, we are under the auspices of the state auditor's office.
Okay, so they, they do it directly?
Well, not, no, they also, in some cases, they outsource the audit to other auditing firms that are generally experienced in government accounting and auditing. So the firm that we have during our audit, they've been with us a few years now. And I've, I've had experiences with them on other, in my former job and they, they're a pretty good sized firm that they do a lot of government audits and government financial reporting. So they're very experienced in, in this area.
Commissioners, I just want to make one thing clear. It, although most of these claims are covered by insurance, there could be claims that are not covered by insurance or that they don't want to turn into the insurance for, for whatever protecting the rate reasons. Yes?
Yeah, so the, the $75,000 number, so that, it might seem like that's coming directly out of the general fund, but that's not necessarily an accurate way of the way the insurance claim would get paid out. So if you ever had an insurance claim, I know I have, I've crashed, crashed a car in my life. The way that would work is you got to pay your deductible. So we'd have some amount of that, we'd have to pay out the general fund for deductible. And then a certain amount would be covered by insurance. If there's any gap left over, then up to that $75,000 number, that's where you'll come back out of the, the general fund. But a lot of that, like if there was, for instance, an incident that was $75,000, a pretty substantial chunk of that money is not coming out of the city budget theoretically. It would be coming out of.
Go ahead.
It would be coming out of the insurance. The other thing with that $75,000 number is that this is a number that we've already got a pre-existing trust set up with Mr. Obendorfer or whoever the city manager is where they are authorized to spend up to $75,000 on other contracts. And that money would be coming directly 100% out of city funds. So this number, again, looking at it in the context of what the old number was, yeah, it's a substantial jump. But it's not out of left field or some wild number that we've never heard of before. So it's not even a number that we don't have a pre-existing trust with the city manager over. It's, it's a number that we've used for other payment authorizations of this nature.
Kim, you get 30 seconds left.
Okay, so I'm not, everybody can write paperwork the way it should be written to make it sound right, to keep you safe from lawsuits and stuff like that. It's between the time of the happening and the paperwork that I'm more worried about. Because the way the city is, it's just, it's just questionable and suspect. Why now? I know there's lawsuits coming up. And also in the letter that I wrote you guys, I mean, ultimately you guys have to take a look at how transparent you want to be and if you want to be part of the problem or also part of the solution. So that's on you guys.
Time expired.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, so as far as transparency, any of these payments would be records requestable?
Oh, sir.
Most city payments, I mean, there might be some obfuscation just for protecting people's privacy or things of that nature. But payments generally made out of city funds or, you know, for on behalf of the city, that those are all generally records requestable and could be seen and are transparent for the public?
That is correct. Yeah, any, any expenditure of the city is a public record and all that information could be requested.
Yeah.
And also might add that the limit that we're talking about, the $75,000 for bidding contracts, this is a law that applies to any local government in Ohio, including much smaller entities than us.
Is, this should be an easy question. Is it already illegal for you to inappropriately appropriate city funds and make illegal payments?
Yes.
Okay. So this ordinance doesn't make that legal?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not. We're bound by laws around expenditures and any, any employee of the city is subject to that. Actually, anybody with the authority to prove an expenditure. So even department head or anyone who approves an expenditure that turns out to be illegal is subject to penalties and recouping of that money by the city.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Jonathan Westle. The way the staff report is written is that this would, as it's currently written, the city manager would have to take this to the city commission if it's over $2,500. Most of you have been here since the beginning of 2024. Have there been any of those between $2,500 and $75,000 in this calendar year?
I'm not aware of any write-off.
No, there, there was, I think there were two, but they were 1,500 and possibly $1,000. They were very low. They were, they were not over the 2,500.
Is there an idea of how many there have been in the last five years that are, let's say, between 2,500 and a limit lower than 75,000, say 5,000, 10,000, 25,000?
So again, that, that type of a analysis would have to be done. We'd have to go back into the system and that has not been done.
I'm just curious if there's, I think you hear what I'm getting here, right, is that is 75,000 the right number? Would a limit of 10,000, right, preclude you from, and like I said two weeks ago, the city manager doesn't need an act of Congress to replace a mailbox, even a really nice mailbox. But 75,000, just like others have said, it's a big jump. And I think even the last meeting, right, there was even a misunderstanding from some of the commissioners and they said, whoa, 75,000. I read that first as 7,500. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Patrizio, there was something brought up about a 3% increase per year. Is there, do you have any insight on that or is what we're doing?
Statutory rate increases every year and it's based on, and I'm not sure if it's 3% or, or what the amount is. It's, it's based on the state guidelines, whether it's a cost of living adjustment or whatever, but it goes by the statutory amount. And I can't tell you off the top of my head what that amount is.
But we're not, that 3% isn't a binding number to what we're trying to do here?
Commission can do whatever they wish as far as, we tied it into that. So you're not in this position 30 years from now again. Where, where 2,500 is now 75,000 where it doesn't seem as much.
Okay, but that wasn't a limit on how much it could be raised by. That's just more of an automated raising in the future. Is that?
Correct. It raises, even the contract rate raises every couple of years and it just goes up.
Go right ahead.
Jeff Grimes. So the city has insurance, if I'm not mistaken. So what part of these wouldn't be covered by that insurance? What kind of the claims wouldn't be covered by the insurance?
So I, I think what's interesting is that these are things that would end up getting paid out regardless. It's just a matter of whether or not the commission would have to put a stamp on it. So let's say, let's say we had a $50,000 insurance claim. Well, at the current moment, that'd have to come before the commission and depending on what it was, we'd probably end up having to approve it. I mean, at least we'd get sued for not paying it out. The only difference now is just that we don't have to wait for the commission to put a stamp on it. It can just, Mr. Obendorf can just handle it himself. Sounds like he's going to report to us once a month of those sorts of incidents. But yeah, this isn't increasing the insurance limit. It's just increasing how much can be handled without the commission micromanaging the city manager's day to day.
But if it's covered by insurance, then the city wouldn't have to write a check.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, so that's what I was explaining earlier was that some part of that is going to end up being a deductible that we would have to pay. But let's say we had a claim against us for $75,000. The likelihood is that we're not paying out $75,000 from the general fund. We'd be paying out, you know, maybe 10,000 or something like that for whatever the deductible is. And then the rest of it would be covered by insurance. And then maybe, maybe insurance says, well, we're only going to pay for, you know, one nice mailbox, not two. And so, well, we'd have to figure out if we wanted to pay the rest of it out of pocket or again, get, risk getting sued.
And what, what is our deductible? Does anybody know that?
It would probably depend on the situation.
It depends on the occurrence was $2,500 and that's property damage. And it's, I believe it's different for other lines of, of insurance, but I would have to check.
So any claims that we needed to do this previously, he said that they did not know and analysis should be done. So I would suggest that before we pass this, maybe we do an analysis before we rush to things. And then I would prefer that you guys would do this on a case by case basis because, you know, that's what you guys are up here for. And then, so they said that there was checks and balances before anybody could be paid. But then we have an issue where there was, city utilities were paid by a company that was using 9,300 State Route 66. So where were the checks and balances in place and who paid, who authorized those to be paid? So I think you guys should really look at this closer. If there's checks and balances, then who approved these utility bills to be paid? I don't remember anybody coming up and saying, hey, we got to, we got to pay ESRG's utility bills, but they got paid somehow. So the checks and balances that everybody's talking about didn't work in that case. So how can we believe that the checks and balances are going to work in this case? I just think that you guys are rushing forward again. He said that only way that somebody could be paid would be a vendor. So then ESRG had to be a vendor and we still haven't got.
They had to be set up in the vendor's system is what he said.
Okay, so.
I don't think that those utility payments were made to ESRG. I think the utility payments were made back to ourselves as our own utility company because Pickwa owns a utility company.
But ESRG was leasing a place. So somebody approved with these checks and balances, private company, the city taxpayers paying their utility bills. So those checks and balances didn't work in that case.
I believe there's actually a chain of emails too where Kevin Crainey noticed that and put a stop to it because he realized, oh, oops. So I know I've had this happen before. Anybody who's rented before has probably had this happen where, you know, you, you leave your last place and oops, you forgot
30 seconds.
to take the gas out of your name. And then all of a sudden you got a bill back and, because you, you left your name on the utilities or some of the person before you did. I know I've had that happen before to me and because ESRG was leasing it from BG, it was leasing it from us, there's kind of a stack there. So I, I think what ended up happening and, you know, perhaps the fire committee will end up figuring this out. I think it's an open question. I think through that nesting of subleases, the city got left as the name on the bill. And as soon as Kevin Crainey noticed, hey, oops, we probably should have done this.
Time expired.
There, there was a stop put to it. So, I mean.
Have we been repaid by ESRG for that?
I don't know.
And do we, we've never got an answer on how much that was or how many months or years that this went on? So the checks and balances didn't work in that situation. So I want you guys to reconsider.
And then to answer your other question about previous years, I think some other people had asked that. We didn't have an answer for the last five years, but over the previous calendar year, it seemed like it was something under 50,000 was a rough estimate.
Go right ahead.
Adam Sees, Fox Drive, West Parkway. I think this goes back to something that I said in September. This city's biggest problem is public relations, public perception. So, you know, I have a different perspective than some people now, but I look back at my old perspective and I can understand why some people are questioning this. And obviously I don't question it anymore, but again, I have a different perspective than not everybody has. So I think you really have to look at that. We have to heal from a lot of bad events that happened. Some of you weren't even up here when those events occurred. So, you know, and it started under a different city manager. That's fine. I'm not putting fault at anyone. The point is you have to realize that there's a lot of people that have a lot of mistrust in this city. And that's just something we're going to have to work around. And that might make your jobs a little bit harder, but that's, that is the job of being up there. So that's what I think. You got to earn the trust of the people back. We don't need, we definitely don't need the people that are running Washington DC running this place. And sometimes before it kind of seemed like that. We don't want the Democrats, so.
I call for a question.
Is my amendment in there? I think we paused adding my amendment. So can we motion to add the amendment and then?
Oh, come on more?
One more.
Debbie Stein. I'd like to say I think the 25,000 is a reasonable amount of money. I think 75 is just exorbitant. I don't think that's a necessity. One question I have is, say Chris Lee's driving down the street and we get into an accident or because of some city malfunction on the street. Those claims still go to Moverma or can you circumvent that process and just pay out of pocket?
Paul?
Well, if it was Chris Lee, I mean, I imagine you'd pay out of your personal insurance.
Probably.
I said if it's a city fault, like something in the roadway.
So it depends if it's maintenance or if it's design or immune from design. So if it's a maintenance issue and there was a record of a road defect that the city did not respond to, there could be potential liability in that. And it's Moverma's policy that we report all accidents. And so anything up over that 2,500, they, that they require that they pay it.
So every claim will go before Moverma?
No, and I believe Frank has a differentiation between what those claims are. There are other claims that are settlement related that are not through the insurance company. And so that could be disputes not related to any kind of defect in the roadway or something of that nature.
Yeah, and for that reason alone, that's why I believe you should keep it at the 25,000. And what are your other local municipalities doing? What is, what is the high rate for approval in Sydney and in Troy, Beaver Creek, Centerville?
Well, and they're probably behind as well. And we're not going to use our neighbors as a comparison. We're going to operate under best practice of what the city.
Well, this isn't an argument. I don't want to argue. I'm just saying, are we looking around? Because we do do comparison. Because we do do comparisons with other communities and other cities, so I think that 25,000 was in place for a reason, I think that's way too high to move it up to 75,000. Citizens are concerned. They're, they're weary, they're, they don't have confidence right now. So I think, you know, as commissioners, you could be a little more thoughtful, and not that you're not being thoughtful, but in the process of this, either look around or is 75,000 really a necessity? And if it's not going to all go before, they'll be reported to Moverma, but the, the chances are you can just pay it out of pocket, I don't think that's, I don't think that's good, and I don't think it's fair for the citizens. And I do like the idea of a report being given, but $75,000 is just out of line, I agree with Kim, we need to step back a little bit. Citizens have some say also in this, they're talking, they're thinking, I think we need to be reasonable and just not, I know there's not a checkbook, a blank check, we all know how that works, there is a process, but it does leave some doors open. So I'd ask that you reconsider that as other citizens have, and the talk in the community as well.
Greg Neves. Why don't we let the citizens vote on it?
Thanks, Greg.
Joe Wilson, 211 Green. I don't know if you realize it, but about roughly 10 years ago, this came up before the commission when I was on, and I believe the request at the time was for $10,000, to increase to $10,000. At the time, the commission voted it down because we wanted to have control over any expenses, not at the 2,500 level, but, so we, we thought it made more sense to have someone who was elected to office or appointed to office to be more involved with the spending of the money. It has nothing to do with the city manager, it's just, we thought at the time that we should be involved with any money issue that we could be involved with. So, again, that was voted down approximately 10 years ago, I don't have the exact date, but I would suggest that, I don't see any reason why you can't raise it to a different level, I think 75 is a little excessive, whether you go 10,000 or 20,000, some lower level would be more acceptable, and, and that would keep you guys in the loop on these expenses that come up. I guess that's about it.
Thanks, Joe.
I'll call for the question.
Motion to make sure my amendment's on there.
Frank. So the two amendments that need to be, that I assume you're moving is, one, not to exceed accumulated amount of 200,000 per year after Exhibit A, and then it adds Section Two that any amount so paid shall be disclosed in a monthly report to the commissioners.
So moved. Can I get a second?
I need a second, yeah.
What, I'm sorry, what, what, what's the?
The amendments are to add a cumulative cap of $200,000, so any individuals can, instances can still be up to 75,000, but if we exceed 200,000 for a calendar year, then everything has to come before us after that, so this would prevent any kind of spicage that people might be worried about. And the second amendment is from Mayor Lee, to have the city manager report to the commission in some manner once a month for any incidents regardless of cost.
So it's just on this amendment?
At the moment, yes.
That's correct, that's just to amend the ordinance.
So what if I wanted to add to this amendment?
Go right ahead.
Mr. Obendorf, we are at 2,500, and we're going to what the Ohio Revised Code allows us to go to, correct? And that's not just us, I mean, that's any municipality that's here.
That's correct, and Troy's statutory, so they're probably already added just by the, the mere fact.
Okay. So my assumption is, is that Jerry put forward this ordinance and picked 75,000 because that is the maximum that we're allowed to do. Is that a safe assumption, Jerry?
That is correct.
So, if I turn around and move to amend this, to cap it at, instead of 75,000, to 25,000, are either one of you going to have any heartburn over that?
I will not.
No, the commission should do whatever they feel is best.
I could stomach 25.
I would second that.
I would move to add to the amendment that the 75,000 be struck to 25,000.
And, but keep all the, well, do you want to keep the cap at 200? And then a monthly reporting as well?
I'm fine with that.
All right.
The amendment first.
All right, I believe Mr. DeBros has made a motion, I'll second that.
Do you want him to read it back?
Yeah, he's got to read it back first.
Wait, I'm sorry, Chris.
So it's now 25,000?
So you need to, the motions to amend will be to amend the ordinance to maximum amount per payout of $25,000.
Yep.
With a maximum cumulative amount per year of $200,000, and Section Two would be in, any amount so paid shall be reported to commissioners in a monthly report.
Motion?
I move to amend as such.
Second, moved and seconded on the amendment, all those in favor, oh, let's have a roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
And now on the ordinance. That's it? As amended?
All right.
I'll need a motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance O-7-24 as amended.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, or, need a roll call, I'm sorry, it's an ordinance.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Commissioner Vedder?
Vedder.
Okay, aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Moving on. Next on our agenda is new business, Resolution Number R-86-24.
A resolution to authorize replat of in lots 6956 and 6597 and dedication of new easements.
Good evening, commission. This item relates to the property known as the Scott Drive redevelopment site, the former Red Roof Inn. The item that's before you this evening is the next step in the, in the due diligence process as the developer works towards obtaining the entitlements necessary to be able to proceed with the proposed redevelopment of the property. This specific item is to prepare to be able to replat the property to accommodate the three individual parcels that would be desired at the end of the process should they go forward. And because there are easements associated with the replating for water lines, sewer lines, electric lines, so on and so forth, it's necessary that it goes through the Planning Commission and come to the City Commission for approval. So on May 14th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and considered the item and recommended approval of this request, and this is the, the last stop in that process in terms of the replat being approved. In reality, the replat won't be recorded until or if or when the developer goes forward with acquisition of the property and the city releases the property to them to proceed with this. This is necessary for them to be able to complete their permitting process, which is also a significant next step in the advancing of the project, so without the replat or ability to replat, they can't receive the permits they need for the end users.
Any questions from commission?
Is there any significant comment from the Planning Commission about this that we should know about one way or the other, or just that it was approved and that was a recommendation?
As far as I know, there wasn't any significant deliberation on it, I wasn't present at the meeting, city planner, Henry, was not able to attend this evening, so I'm just carrying the water on this one, but I'm familiar enough with it that I, I think I would know, and I'm not aware of there having been any concerns raised.
Any other questions? Questions from citizens?
Hey Greg, can you leave the mic down for him? Thank you, Greg.
First time here.
What's your name?
I'm Stephen Kinder, 329 Blaine Avenue.
Hi, Stephen.
Mr. Simmons knows the problem I have, the alley entrance.
Oh, if you're going to. This is about the replat out at the?
The hotel.
The hotel. This isn't, this isn't open comment yet, so when public comment comes, you can talk about that.
This what this was.
No, sir, it's, it's open comment on the ordinance or item that we're talking about right now, so.
Well, fine, guys.
No, you don't, you're fine, we want you to come up, we definitely want you to come up, but if you don't mind, do you have a comment about the, the, the resolution that we're talking about?
No, I don't mind.
Okay, will you come back up, please, then? All right. Any other?
Adam Sees, Planning Commission. As far as I know, nobody came up during the meeting and had any problems with that particular one, that was a pretty big docket that day, but I believe, what's the exact one that's listed, because I know there were two that came from us?
Okay.
This one was, if you name the lady, it's the lady that put in the request, correct?
That's the next one, this one's Scott Drive.
Scott Drive, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there was definitely no, no deliberation really, the gentleman showed up, everybody was pretty okay with what's going on there, and then the same thing with the, the next one, so, just thought I'd give you that information.
All right, thank you. All right, I need a motion then.
This is the first reading?
Oh, it's first, no, it's.
It's a resolution.
Resolution. I move that we pass Resolution R-86-24.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution Number R-87-24.
A resolution authorizing the sale and lease of city-owned real estate.
Thank you. To clarify, this is for the sale of the property currently owned by the city at the corner of Sherman Street and West Water Street, it's formerly known as the High Street Park, or before that, there was a water tower there many years ago. This property is no longer necessary to the, to the city operations or public interest, and rather than continue to mow it and maintain it, serving no public interest, we are receptive to the idea of selling the property. In this particular case, you have a purchaser, Mrs. Facto, who is desirous of obtaining the property to place a new home on this location, and she would be returning to Pickwad, having lived here previously, to live in the new home that she plans to have constructed there. We would route this through the land realization program, which means that the city would in effect be authorizing the conveyance of the property to the Pickwad Improvement Corporation, who then would execute the sale with the prospective purchaser. The terms of the sale are 10% of the lot value, which is, I just had the number, where did it go? $1,870, which is more than enough to capture any expenses incurred in regards to the title search and closing costs and things of that variety. The intent here is not to make money, relieve ourselves of unnecessary or unutilized land that's simply a maintenance liability for us at this point. Questions? And this, just for the record, this was not the other item before the Planning Commission, that's the next item.
My understanding is there's been some concern in the past about city-owned property and that we were somehow holding a high number of properties that, that had reasonable value or no value, and this would be a way to resolve part of that concern?
Yeah, it, it no longer serves the purpose for which the city acquired the property originally, and it's a unnecessary asset, and it's more productive if we can release it to private interest who can redevelop the property with a, a new home.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions from citizens?
Greg Neves. Doesn't the bike path exit right there?
No, this is on the northeast corner of the intersection, the bike path isn't contiguous to this property. It, it exits out on Water Street, down the hill, this is up the hill where it's separated between the French Park and the path.
On top of the hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we know?
Can you state your name?
Jeff Grimes.
Thank you.
Do we know how much the city purchased this property for?
Chris?
I have no idea, the city has owned the property for decades, there's no, I have no record of it.
So you've owned it for decades?
Yeah.
They've owned this for decades, so I was just wondering if that was going to cover our costs on, you know, what we paid for it originally and the upkeep and stuff? So nobody can answer how much that they paid that, paid for?
No.
What it covers is the, it more than covers the closing cost and the transaction fees, and then by selling it, we'd no longer be incurring the cost to mow and maintain the property, so it would be a net gain, the return on investment would happen in a very short period because we would no longer be expending those funds to maintain the property.
And it's certainly much better to have it out in the public for somebody to develop it, as, as a lot of people have pointed out, and I agree, the city is not a real estate company.
Or not landlord.
And we, we shouldn't be just holding on to property for no reason, so getting it out there into the public so that it can be developed and, and used for some benefit is a much better use of that than, than just sitting on it.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I just was curious on how much the city had paid for this, and I completely agree that the city shouldn't be in the real estate business, but you are, and so probably should try to make some money off that also, since, since you are in the real estate business.
Thank you.
Nicholas Mart. I just wanted to know, is this property commercial or residential?
It is on low-density residential, and the surrounding neighborhood is all residential as well.
Okay, thanks.
It, it's an entirely appropriate proposed reuse of the property, and the prospective buyer I know is very excited to be able to come back to Pickwad and place a new home there and be able to reside in our community again.
Okay.
Jonathan Westle. Do we believe it's fair market value for the size of that property that's adjacent to a street, has utilities, all of that? If you just look up like land sales, right, lots in the city, I think generally sell for more than $1,800, so smile on my question. And I agree, we should probably sell it, it's just sitting there, but.
No comment.
I'll call for the question.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of Resolution R-80?
We're only talking about the question.
The question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, I may have to vote on the question, and then we're ready to vote, right?
So we need a motion to adopt, is that what you're asking?
That's, that's what I thought.
Motion to adopt, was Resolution R-88?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
That's 24.
Second.
All those in favor of Resolution Number R-87-24?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Last on the agenda is Resolution Number R-88-24. Last on the agenda is resolution number R-88-24.
A resolution authorizing the rezoning of 1121 West Water Street.
Good evening, Commissioner. Kyle Hankelman, Community Services Director. This case is a resolution requesting a zoning map amendment for a property at 1121 West Water Street. That property currently is zoned NX, which is neighborhood mixed use. And the request that the planning commission reviewed and recommended for zero on May fourteenth was to rezone that to TRL, which is our traditional low-density district. Currently, that property is on the corner of Water, Water Street there in Castle. And the use is, has been over the last couple of years, a low-density office. And so the property owner requested to rezone that to allow residential use for that property. The planning commission again heard that on their May fourteenth meeting and did recommend four to zero to approve the rezoning from NX to TRL. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
More housing is always welcome.
I will note as well, the entire neighborhood is residential. This was the only property that, in the area that was being used for a different use.
And this is the address we're, we were talking about with the previous?
Yes, Mr. Sees noted this, this case previously.
Alright.
Any questions from commissioners? Any questions from citizens?
Debbie Stein, is this gonna be R1, or is it multi?
No, it is traditional low-density, it's just a single-family.
It's a single-family?
Correct.
The auditor's website, it says Waterloo Street. So it's Water Street, it's not Waterloo?
I'm sorry?
On the auditor's website, it says Waterloo Street.
For this property?
Uh huh.
We can certainly reach out to them, obviously, we, yeah.
It doesn't have that, it, it, that's another parcel underneath that you're looking at.
Oh, I am?
Yeah. N44 is Pickwa, R50 is not Pickwa.
Is it owned by Halifax Land Company?
No, it's owned by Leading Stars Realty.
It's owned by who?
Leading Stars Realty.
Okay, my, my only question was it was R, that it was gonna be R1, that's what I was concerned about, so thank you.
Yep.
Come on down.
Thank you for hearing my request, commissioners. This is in the same, like you said, that park is right across the street from where we're, they just, you just approved.
Sorry, can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Tanya Blair, Leading Stars Realty, 1121 West Water.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're alright.
But yes, we wanted to get this rezoned as a residential. It's not been a great location for my real estate company. I'm not getting traffic up there, it's residential, it's a great neighborhood. I think there's a church behind us, and other than that, we're the only commercial, so I would like to, as a real estate agent, turn this into a home, and it will be a single-family, it is not going to be multi, and that's what we applied for, so, thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the city manager's report.
I'm sorry, I only had one update today, and that's just a reminder, we've been receiving a lot of calls, actually, we've received a lot of calls when they wind up getting to my office, and it has to do with the sanitation and picking up of anything that is fabric-covered furniture or, or mattresses. And so I would just advise anybody that is going to dispose of that and have us pick it up, please go to the website and review how to wrap that, it has to be wrapped completely, and it has to do with the fact that it's a health issue for our, for our staff to get involved in picking up these items, be it furniture or mattresses. And so if they're not completely wrapped, that means top, bottom, sides, all the way around, then we cannot pick it up, and we have to wait until it's properly wrapped. So I would just please encourage the public to go to the website and take a look, there, there are instructions on how to cover box springs, couches, love seats and the like. Thank you.
Okay. And guess, we will proceed on to commissioners' comments, and we will start with Commissioner Vedder.
Okay, thank you. A couple of issues, I had a call from a constituent who was wondering if we still have the opportunity to place any restrictions on the sale of recreational marijuana. I'm aware that we have two medical dispensaries in Pickwa, and I promised her that I would, would raise that question, and, and again, it's, it's I think a legal issue and not one that I'm gonna be able to settle tonight, but I think at some point we can explore that possibility.
Absolutely, and I'd be happy to speak to that. They haven't completed the final language on that code yet, and so once that's in place, it will, it will permit the commission to enact your powers to do whatever it is you want to with that, with regard to that.
And my understanding is that we're also looking at, at least reviewing tax revenue that might be appropriate for that.
Absolutely, if that's your wish, we will certainly do it.
Yeah, my understanding is currently we're not getting much tax revenue from, from what's going on with, with the medical.
Correct, the medical marijuana all goes to the county, through sales tax.
Second thing is, have we heard anything back about our Pickwa survey that we were asked to participate in?
I'm sorry, what survey?
Drybush survey, the Pickwa, Pickwa branding survey?
Oh, correct, yeah, so that's still in the process, and I, I'm sorry, but Michelle left. We should have something back in July, and so the committee, the, the stakeholders committee that's made up of city residents, business owners and the like, met with the consultant two weeks ago to go over the results of the survey and start to put together the branding themes that go with what the community identity is, based on feedback from the community, both through in-person surveys and through the survey that was online. And so once we have that back, we should have a launch of the brand, I would, I would predict, right around the time we cut the ribbon to the lock nine.
Thank you.
Late July, yeah.
I'm in possession of two bits of material. One is from the Miami County Recycles Group, and they have very articulately listed those things that are appropriate for, for recycling at the recycling facility. And plus, I think our, our own department has talked about yard waste and, and those kinds of things. So if you haven't seen those, take a, take a peek at those. I still see people broadcasting grass all over the street and all kinds of things, so obviously they're not getting the message. I wanted to acknowledge that the Pickwa Power System received a diamond-level award for reliability. And I, I find it real interesting because on TV, AES is talking about their wonderful new invention that we've had for over a year, which is increased information through billing and the ability to, to turn on, turn off meters electronically. So I think, I think we're ahead of the system, and I, and I think the power system needs to be rewarded for an extremely high national rating of, of reliability. I'm aware of that, there was a recent article in the, in the Dayton paper about PFABs, and that I think, I understand that we will start testing for PFABs in 2025. I guess I had no idea that this was anything other than a discussion about firefighter foam, and that really is not accurate at all. It's a much bigger, much bigger issue with that, and so I know Kevin's involved in, in taking a peek at that, so we'll look forward to getting more information about that. The next meeting in the Hans Pavilion will be June the twentieth, that's a Thursday, at 7:30. We moved it back a half an hour because that's also the date of the Juneteenth program, and so some of us are involved in both of those things and needed a little, little extra time, so Juneteenth, I think, will be at the gazebo in downtown, starting at 5:30 on the twentieth, which is a Thursday night. Then I wanted to say a special thank you to Kenton Kaiser. I thought his presentation on street resurfacing was well done, and it answered a lot of questions about that and where we're headed with that, so really, really good presentation, and I thought Kenton did a nice job on that. I yield.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Oh, let's see, first of all, Mayor Lee, I owe you an apology. I apologize for assuming your vote.
You did, didn't you?
For my amends, I will bring a loaf of homemade sourdough next time.
You make good bread, I'll give you that. You definitely do, he does.
So, it might, it might be a while before my shoulder allows me, though. I am very pleased to see Mr. Kinder here tonight. There, since I got to sit in this chair since January, there, there have been some disappointments, but there have also been some really, really great moments, and getting to meet Mr. Kinder was one of those. I'm really glad to see you here this evening. That is all I got for you.
Do you wanna wish somebody something?
Oh, that's right. Is AJ still back there?
AJ, step out here.
AJ, are we allowed to sing at these meetings? Oh, no, 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 sticking your head out, no, 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 no. Today AJ turns thirty-one years old. Happy birthday, young man.
Happy birthday AJ.
He's like, I'm sorry I said anything.
That's, yeah, I'm with you on that. I've knocked him over the head on that several times, you're right about that. Alright, thank you. Commissioner DeBros?
I have two things. One, I actually just got this a little bit ago. Mr. Obendorfer, do you have any idea if the drains are open up at Swift Run? If we are for some reason letting water out of the hydraulic canal?
Yes, as a matter of fact, let me find the text message from Mr. Crane, so I'm accurately reported. He said that, that they were open, they were closed yesterday, and they're trying, they're treating the lakes, and so they have to have the water level lowered in order for it to be effective, and that's probably it for the weed prevention.
Fantastic, so there was a reason.
Yes, there's a maintenance reason attached to that.
Perfect, thank you. And then my next and last comment is directed towards Mr. Obendorfer and Mr. Patrizio, and it is regards to the fire training committee. And I would ask each of you to work with me in a manner in which we can get the questions that the committee would like answered from city staff and city employees, so that they can, can ultimately complete their task, which is to compile the report. So I don't wanna get lost and, and stuck in the weeds over semantics as to how we actually get these questions answered, but the important thing is that they get answered, and they get answered in a prompt manner to which the committee can be able to do their work. I don't know what that looks like, if it's initially questions are submitted via writing, and then after that, if a follow-up, personal interview needs to happen, or some sort of process like that, but I would, I would, would like for us to work together to find out a solution to this, to get the questions answered that allows the committee to do their work that everyone can live with, so. With that, I will yield back.
Commissioner Holman?
Alright, I got two things, and they're both related to the various committees that the city has. Everybody who is on one of the city committees, thank you for your volunteer service for that, we appreciate that. Also, it's nice to see that there's so much interest in that. We've gotten a lot more applicants for all of the openings the past few months than I, what I think normally is, normally happens over the previous years, so it's good to see that there's so, so much interest and involvement. Unfortunately, not everybody can be on the committees. They, they would be if, if I could make it so, but they told me I couldn't. The other thing is, if you did make it onto one of the committees, there's some things you need to remember. You are on those committees, serving the people of this city. You don't serve the commissioners, and you're not there to serve yourselves. Your committee position is not a way for you to get preferred or priority access to city resources or to law enforcement activity. To maintain your ethics, it's incumbent on you to avoid even the perception of abuse of your power or position. That doesn't mean that you don't get to enjoy city services or law enforcement as every other citizen does, but it does mean that you need to go through the same process that everyone else does, you need to wait in the same line that everyone else does. You don't in any way get to use your position or the presumption of your position to try to pressure anyone into accelerating your problem. Consider this your warning, if making, if meeting the ethical behavior standards of avoiding even the appearance of leveraging your position for personal benefit, if that's a problem with you, then you need to resign from your committee position. If I see or hear of this again from anybody trying to use their position as such, consider this your warning. I will be making reprimands and putting those onto the agenda, which as part of that reprimand would involve names and examples. So let's continue our duty to the people of the city and serving them, and not using our positions to try to serve ourselves. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. My comments are pretty simple. Thanks to Stacy Roth, who came from Main Street Pickwa, listing some of the initial events that she's gotten out, looking forward to more events, and especially Rock Pickwa, that they're gonna be involved in, I'm looking forward to that. I wanna congratulate all the high school graduates from the city of Pickwa and from Lehman. I do wanna congratulate Katie McFarland, who placed first in pole vault in Division Three for the State of Ohio in the state track meet, and my niece, who lives with me, placed sixth in the high jump in Division Three for the state track meet. And I'm just proud of both of them, and, and just happy that they're both citizens of Pickwa and, and that we can represent. Summer is almost here, if you felt the mugginess and the swampiness today, and you got air conditioning, air conditioning, please enjoy it. If you're gonna take care of your yards and cut your grass and stuff, please don't put grass clippings into the roadway. It's dangerous for motorcycles and bicycles and anybody that's on the road, so just be, be cautious of that. And just go out, enjoy the bike path, enjoy the parks. Parks have suffered a little vandalism of late, so we're trying to come up with some ideas to limit that. People are spray painting in the bathrooms and on the buildings, and so if you see something, say something. Report it, let somebody know. Asking the police to do what they can as well, frequently as possible, visit the, the parks and, and keep an eye out. And as a good citizen, please do that as well. And with that, we will move to public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission on agenda items. Comments or requests to be limited to five minutes. People are being warned at this point in time that there will be no tolerance for profane behavior that causes a disturbance, so. Anybody, you can come up now, sir, yes sir. Thanks Greg, he's coming up. Appreciate you.
Stephen Kinder, 329 Blaine Avenue. Veteran, disabled, I belong to PVA, that's one of the things I get to the VA. I just received a handicapped van from the VA so I can maneuver and get around. My drive, I've talked with the city street person, didn't get too far. Mr. Simmons come down and seen the problem I have, the drive off of Grant into the alley, it's only a- The drive off of Grant into the alley, it's only a, it's a blind alley. Need to be cut back and lowered so I can get my van in the garage and not be worried about being run over in the street by unloading or, or just, just using the van in general. It's, it's just something that needs to be done. I've had someone come out, didn't mention the name of it, took a picture of it, but I haven't heard anything since. But it would be nice if I could get off the street or not try to load and unload and get back in my garage where I can do it safely. Especially with, I'm in the winter, it's a ways down the road yet, but I don't want to be stuck out there in the street trying to maneuver.
Has this been moved to a high priority?
Yes, I addressed it when I emailed the commission last week. I was out there with the public works director, and it's on the schedule for work next week when they're in the area, so they'll go ahead and do a temporary repair, and then that alley is scheduled to be resurfaced next year, so it'll, they'll redo the approach and pave the alley.
I'm not a street engineer, I'm a much fastering engineer, but I know they need to cut that concrete entrance down.
They, they have a repair in mind.
And then start, start their payment, because it's getting over that hump.
Right, they, they have a repair in mind that'll actually make sure that you don't high point or drag on that, so we'll see if that works first and go from there.
All right, thank you.
And their repair in mind is specifically for his specific vehicle that they looked at?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sir, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder.
And thank you, Paul, for going out to his house.
Thank you, Ben.
And talking to him, yes.
Hi.
Hi there.
I'm Jean France.
Yes, you are.
I'm the old lady you appointed to the public committee.
Yes, we did.
And, Mr. Holman, if you look up my record, I never abused any of the committees. I've been on a lot of them.
You've been on a lot of them, she has.
Yes, I have. And I'm very pleased to be able to do this. I'm very old, but there's a lot of knowledge out there.
We want to take advantage of that knowledge as well.
Yes. At this point, my husband, who's been gone a little over a year, left me with probably two hundred historic pictures. So I am distributing, distributing them to different businesses that seem to relate to them. Some of them go back to maybe the early nineteen hundreds, and bits and pieces, and they're broken and handled. They're all going to make some history walls. I brought one of the pictures here of the early YMCA.
Oh, nice.
So, I'm very pleased to be active again, as my husband's gone now.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And I still have a really great mind.
You sure do, and we're going to use it.
So, I brought you a paper that nobody has mentioned, and this is where I knew Park has opened, June eighth, indeed, and it's being named for Mr. Jim Towey. Did anybody know about that?
Through the paper? Mm-hmm.
So, I thought I could bring you the paper.
I'll get that from you, yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for appointing me.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering, we, we appreciate it. Like I said, you've been a longtime volunteer, and we appreciate your service.
I started volunteering in ninety-one, when I retired from L.A.D. I started with hospice, and then about five committees since, and so I have to be active again. I don't have a great voice.
You don't have to.
But that doesn't hurt my hair.
It sure does.
You've been a very active member of the Southview Neighborhood Association as well.
Since its beginning.
That's right.
We helped get it started in mine driveway, I think.
Are the, are the pictures that are bits and pieces right now, are those some of your pieces?
I have pieces always in my car. But Tom's getting ready to start hanging some of my pictures. So, of course, it's really interesting because my husband didn't seem to have anything else to do.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, thank you for bringing that, I was going to come get it from you. All righty, thank you.
Jean, hang around for a sec, hang around for a second, I'm going to talk to you for it.
Really? Oh, that's good to know.
All right, thank you, Jim.
You will. Ten Tilly Park in Kettering. Next?
Nicholas Mart. I have a couple topics. What is the current, say, what is the current brand of the city? I mean, do we have a current brand?
Working on it.
The, the current brand is about five or six different versions of things that are out there, and I think the, the latest one is reflected on the website.
It's still not where vision becomes reality.
Yeah, I hope not.
No, and it's not the bicycle either.
Oh, it's not Tree City USA biking community, something along those lines?
No, that, so we, and when I first got here, I recognized that there were many brands, and there was no cohesiveness between the departments. So what we did, what you see on the website is kind of our baked-down version to the most basic thing, to get us to a point where we had time to work with the community, to come up with whatever it is that, you know, reflect the community values and identities, so that's...
So we're trying to come down to, like, a more singularity, like a more definitive, all-inclusive brand?
Right, and, and so that was through the survey that was done, it was in-person, online, community stakeholders were engaged, there were two workshops that were held, and so the outcome of that will be what, what gets presented.
Okay, thanks. The next question is for Commissioner Holman. I would like you to kind of elaborate on the warning to different committee members, and if you could give an example, because I'm unaware of what you are talking about, as far as members usurping their duties to service themselves for personal gain?
Yeah, it's been, I've seen a few things. I'm not going to be naming names or giving examples at this time. There's no need to do that right now. I think that the warning will get it to stop. There's just come to, several commissioners noticed that some people on some of the committees have taken upon themselves to attempt to get priority access to certain city resources or law enforcement activity that would not otherwise be available to a, a regular standard citizen. Now, that was not granted, because that's not an ethical use. Part of the ethics guidelines that govern us, and anybody who would volunteer for a city position, is avoiding the appearance of any kind of abuse of your power. So even if you're not actually abusing your power, any appearance of you trying to apply pressure, that suddenly becomes an ethics problem. So, my warning was merely a reminder that anybody volunteering for a city position or on the commission, that you are bound to a very high standard of ethics, and you need to be very careful in what you are trying to get done, and making sure that you are not going through a route that a regular citizen would not have access to.
Is it, is it in any way, like, well, can you elaborate on if it's, I know you don't...
I know at this time...
I, I kind of am looking at, is this, and in relation to the battery burn committee, or...
Not in relation to the battery burn committee.
Okay, because like they said, they're kind of trying to get their footing in their...
Yeah, it's not, nothing to do with them.
Okay.
Though if they decide to try to abuse those positions, then certainly it may become about them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Mees. Speaking of which, you guys stay back here. I don't need that.
There's, there's proof.
Of what?
Of Ava Silver's outright lied. She could not have evidence against those allegations that she accused me of, because they never happened.
Okay.
And she needs to be dismissed. There's the perfect scenario right there, and there's two more to come.
What, she, that, she did that as a civilian, she didn't do it representing the city.
Well, she, she is part of the city now, and she shouldn't have done it, because there's no allegation, none of her allegations were proven to be true, because I never said a word to her, I didn't even know where she lived, until I got the paperwork for that CPO. And there's two more coming.
Okay.
And the same situation, she needs to be dismissed immediately. And also, Adam, have you ever concealed carry in here? That's not what I heard. And that's another reason why we should...
You address, you're supposed to address us, or the...
Why she, that's another reason why we should have...
Metal detectors?
Metal detectors out there.
Okay.
I mean, every...
We've been talking, we've been talking about it since you said that, so that, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, well, you've seen what some of the posts from EVA were.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Eva Silver's, and yes, I do hold a BZAC, and no, I will not be resigning from it. My actions were ver, my actions were very clear when I did this as a citizen for obvious reasons. I will not entertain the back and forth, I will not entertain the public defamation of character attached to the BZAC, because what you have been given is my private post, which I am free to have my own opinions and views on, as long as that does not sway my interpretation of the codes. As we're talking about the current litigation, these litigations are not over by far. There are still two pending, and there are further litigations to come, for obvious reasons. I did request CPOs because of behavioral issues and background issues, it is for my own safety. That should be pertinent by evident. However, I'm going to let my character, I'm going to let the fact that I have done community service in this town for over ten years, and I'm going to state this. For the first time in my life, I regret actually doing community service. I regret taking a position as a tenant to tell landlords what the city proposed in the rental registration program, and let me tell you why I regret that. Because after reflecting on everything that I have went through, and has been said, or interpreted, or assumed it was about certain people, while my name and my photo have been blasted all over the internet, and you'll find nobody's name on my page, just interpretations and assumptions, and my parents always told me, your first mistake is assuming anything. However, what I will say is that I am a little upset now, because a lot of these people I did not know, and could go honestly the rest of my life without knowing. And personally, after looking back at it, as a tenant, as landlords with businesses and rental properties, I probably should not have had to address these people with what the city required of them. That should have been something they were on top of. So, I will continue to do my public cleanups, I will continue to serve the BZA, and I will continue to be a human being who has a right to earn thought process. And what I will not do is step away from the merit that I stand on in this community, because certain people don't like that I speak facts. What I said, I stand on. It's that simple. I stand on the fact that I do not, I will not believe that the city paid each one of these companies off. I do not believe that the independent testing that was done was also paid off. I have this thing called common sense, and I'm going to stand on it. I would strongly encourage the citizens to be fully aware of what they say about somebody, because there are legal repercussions to it.
Thank you.
Short?
Yes, you are.
Millie Sheets, seven hundred South Downey Street.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, me and my, my husband ain't here because I'm speaking today.
Yes, ma'am.
Probably got a pillow over his face. But, first of all, we went to the battery burning committee, and I suggested that they should look into the ex-commissioners, ex-city manager, and ex-mayor. So, I did say that, and he was there, Tom, when I said it. Second of all, each one of you guys have to conduct yourself, you know, highly.
Yes, ma'am.
But there's one person that I do not approve, is yesterday, they call me a B, and I want to get it straight, I'm not a B, I'm an F and B. Second of all...
And you're not cussing, so...
No, I'm not cussing. I didn't cuss. I don't appreciate them calling me names, coming by my house and flipping me off, and, you know, he's supposed to be highly up there. First of all, if I'm out in my yard, I have my way, you know, I'm out there weeding, so they don't need to be out there cussing, because I'm out there weeding, I'm doing my yard. Second of all, you know, you don't, you don't have to act like that, and that's my opinion.
Appreciate that.
And, third, I don't think, I think the city is divided. There's too many people divided in this city, they need to come together as one. We all need to be one.
Your husband suggested a way to do that.
But then he gets comments on his page, so he's trying, but there's people saying, oh, it ain't going to happen. Well, if you're not going to ha, if it's not going to happen, that means it's on you. So you need to conduct yourself properly, you know, properly. And I think that our street commissioner, veteran, is not trash. You said our south side is trash, and if you don't like the south side, you need to move on up the hill, you know. I don't think it's trash, there's a few houses that might need looking at, but my whole street, I don't think it's trash, and I don't appreciate that, that you're saying that the south side is trashy. There is some areas that needs to be looked at.
I didn't say that, I said that some people have commented that Pickwood is a trashy city.
Well, then, I think they're, they need to go and look at the other south side, because there's some areas that really needs to be attended to.
I have never said what you...
Our street, anybody, you're more welcome, come to seven hundred South Downey Street and look around, because I don't think it's that trashy. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Millie.
Hello, Josh Blackshire, Fox Drive. So, there's, there's a lot of drama going on, so I'm going to leave out the screenshots and reading off all the gay bashing, the racist posts, all that good stuff.
Yes, thank you.
But Valerie Mulligan did ask me to pass on an announcement, she couldn't be here today. Three to ten PM, July fourth, at Pickwa Center, is the Pickwa, the Fourth Fest, or whatever they're calling it, so just wanted to pass that on, so...
I appreciate, I was going to do it, and I got a message from her as well, but thank you for saying that.
All right, and I also do want to give a shout-out, too, for Jim Sheets, you know, he wasn't here tonight, I think he was a little bummed out that he didn't make his commission and everything, but I want to give him a shout-out for trying.
He's trying, and I want him to keep trying.
He's, he's going to make it there one day, and...
He will.
He's doing a heck of a job trying to get this drama cleared up, and that's the kind of people we need in this town.
That's what we need, people volunteering.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Adam Seast, also Fox Drive. Well, I was going to address...
You guys live together?
No, I, I'm at three-eight-seven, he lives on the much more expensive end of Fox Drive. I'll address a few things. No, I've never carried a gun to the city commission meeting. I thought we were friends, I still consider you a friend, I don't know what's going on with that, I'm not supposed to address that kind of stuff, I don't have a problem with you. What I did mention one time in front of you, and my employee was sitting with us, so I know is that I was gonna ask whether you could, could or couldn't. And you can vouch for this, I spoke with the chief. I was informed that the only person, even the city manager can't carry a gun in this place. Only law enforcement and certain, well, law enforcement, let's just leave it at that, so. I just don't know where this drama starts, I mean, I try to get along with everybody, I think a lot of us have a lot of similar views and. I'm gonna reiterate with what Eva says, I don't always agree with everything Eva says, I don't always agree with everything a lot of people say. But, um, yeah, as soon as I got on this board, it's been nothing but, I'm, I'm with her, like there, my, my little Apple Watch thing tells me my blood pressure's too high. It's constant, I mean, I literally go from being everyone's best friend to getting on that board, and now everyone hates me. And I haven't even, like before I even got to go to a meeting. So, I don't even wanna know what it feels like to be you guys. I'm glad you're my commissioner cuz I couldn't do it. I mean, I get it, I said it before, there's a lot of things that were done wrong. And people, rightfully so, have some trust issues with the city, and I think, you know. I get to see a perspective that they don't by being here more often with my board appointment. Uh, and I'd like to mention, I hope you guys weren't talking about me because I have definitely not benefited from being on this board. It would be quite the opposite. But anyways, I do it because I wanna better my community. You know, I just wish we could all get along, I'll, I'll say, Greg, I consider you a friend, whatever issues we have, you are more than welcome to stop at three eighty-seven Fox Drive and talk to me. And I think, now I'm gonna start talking about what I actually came up here to talk about, which is Jim Sheets. Um, I didn't get to make it to the last meeting cuz I was busy at work. I just wanna say, uh, I got to listen to what Jim Sheets was starting to say at the very end, and then the storm stuff started. He's right, that's what, exactly what he said at that last meeting that I attended, so that would've been two meetings ago, is what we need, this community needs to heal. People need to put their differences aside, and I know it's deep. It's deep, and I don't even know if a snowplow could clear out some of the deepness that there is, but man, we're all, we all live in the same city. This is our town, and we should all work to better it together. I don't, I, I might disagree with people, but I have this, this unique thing that my grandfather was good at, except he did, he never got into public, uh, public stuff. So he never had to deal with this drama, but my grandfather could completely disagree with somebody and still like them. He would always find the best in somebody, and that's what I try to do. And I'll admit, I swayed away from that, so to the people that I swayed away from that a little bit, I apologize, I'm not my grandpa. But, I think I'm gonna go back to trying to be more like him because what, the way he looked for the good in everybody, even if he disagreed with them, is the way that we should all work. This is our town, all of us are taxpayers, even the people that live outside of this town, send their kids to school here, you know, work here, come in here, grocery shop here, whatever. So I think it's time that we come together, and I, I am more than willing, anyone who wants to reach out to me, you all know where I'm at, come out and talk to me. Let's find a way to make this town our town, not just your town, not just people on this side's town, not just people on that side's towns, everybody's damn town, and I am gonna cuss, sorry Frank. So, that's what I've got to say, you know, no hard feelings towards anybody, I get it, we've been heated, I'm not mad at anybody. I'd like to go back to going to, uh, Jeff's restaurant with mister, uh, with you. Sorry, I'm just, been a long day, so appreciate everybody.
Thank you.
And you didn't cuss, we have dams.
F and B.
Joe Wilson, two eleven green, um, wanna give you an update on the neighbors helping neighbors program that's, uh, good on this year. Uh, we had our first event on, uh, May eleventh, and Commissioner Holman was there. And he helped plant a lot of flowers, and I thought you were gonna have a green thumb, but when you got done, it was brown. But that's good because it was dirt, right? So, no, we.
I hope those flowers are still there.
Yeah, so far, they're doing fine, but, uh, we did some painting, we did some weeding, uh, planting flowers, mulching, and then Adam Sees, uh, volunteered to, uh, help us, uh, clean the back fence with his power washing. Cuz we tried to do it by hand, and it didn't work very well, so Adam's helping us with that, so that's really nice of him. The lady is near ninety and had more energy than we did, I think, right? So, it was, it was a good day. Uh, our next one is actually next week, which is the twelfth of June. We're gonna be up on Summit Drive, and we're gonna help a lady with, uh, primarily painting. And the thing that I like about this particular one is, uh, this year we're trying to get groups that are either associated with the person or have a, a, a connection in another way. So the, the initial house we did in May was the lady's church, uh, church members came and helped, and even the preacher came and.
Wow.
Planted flowers, so that, and she was really shocked when he peeked his head up out of the flowers to see, you know, who she was, so that was a good start. Now this next one, uh, again, it's on Summit, we don't have a group with a connection with her, but we have a group of junior high and senior high honor society kids.
Nice.
And they're coming along with their, uh, advisors from school. So they're not only smart, they're going to, uh, do some work, and I said, you're gonna get paint on you, um, so be prepared. So they're, they're really, they're coming, I think it's gonna be really fun, and I'm excited to, uh, I don't know if I'll have to teach these kids how to paint, but who knows, but.
Are all your projects projected out for the year?
Yeah, we, we have a possible opening that, uh, we're still, uh, we have some trouble getting people to actually ask us for help sometimes. So we, we could use another one if, uh.
I might have one for you, I'll get with you.
Let me know. But anyway, I'm excited about that, and I'm, I've been, I sent a message to one of the school board members to come out and say nice things, you know, I just, I'm sure they will. So I want them to be aware of what their kids are doing. And, cuz I often hear about, you know, kids doing bad things, and doing this and that, that, you know, that everyone thinks that the generation behind them is worse than they are, you know, that's typical. But we're gonna prove that wrong, uh, next week, hopefully weather permitting. We do have a, uh, house in the fall, uh, which is a big, uh, city write-up issue, a lot of issues that, uh, have been noted by the city. But, uh, we're gonna try to get a big group to work on that. And if anyone is listening, uh, who would wanna help us, whether with a paintbrush, we'll take a check. But more importantly, we'd love to have you with us, or if you have a group that would like to help us, that would be even better. And I've been trying to talk to a lot of the churches cuz, uh, I keep telling them they should have, uh, they should be aware of someone. Churches that may need to help. So, uh, if you guys know of anyone like that, that would be great. And, uh, uh, any groups, groups would be really nice. Uh, so, you can contact me or just contact the mayor, it may be easier to contact the mayor, and he can get ahold of me with any, any interest that anyone might have. But, uh, uh, again, it's no cost to the people getting to work, everything is provided through grants and donations, so. I just wanna let you know, especially about the kids, I'm really happy.
That's, that's a good one, I like that.
Yeah, and we've had a few kids in the past, but this will be a nice big group, and they're very excited, uh, well, I haven't talked to them, but the, uh, the teacher, who is their advisor, is very excited about, uh, doing this work, so. So if, uh, I think that's your ward, is that right? Right behind, uh, upper remote? Yeah, so I've been, I've been contacting the commissioners when we have one in the ward. So, uh, that's your contact, I think you're aware of it anyway, but, but again, I appreciate your help. And, uh, anyway, I just thought you should know.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
No, you can only speak once, I'm sorry.
Come back next time.
I just wanted to say that if anybody gets unhappy, I will take their position.
Hi, Paige Kendall, I live out on Cherry Street. Speaking in a, to what Mr. Wilson over here was just saying, um, I've been trying to go around to a lot of our local churches because I am trying to invest in our youth. This is something that I just have wanted to start branding, and I think our youth, especially the ones that, you know, may be in juvenile detention centers or troubled or a problem. They don't have a lot to do, so I am reaching out to all the churches in Miami County to, and also I've went to the Valley Church, so I've started there. What we wanna do is, we wanna try to do a summer fest for our youth. And what we wanna do is, we wanna invest in them, we wanna bring, um, speakers, motivational youth speakers to come in and speak to these juveniles and help them. Help bring them up, and not just make it a one, one and done event, we need something that's gonna keep, keep going, like keep, maybe twice a week, we could meet. And like I said, we're just brainstorming these ideas right now, so we're trying to do all summer long, and then at the end of the summer, right before school, we have a big Christian summer fest of where we can have, you know, bands and truck, trucks, uh, with free food, Kona eyes. Games and all that, and really invest in our youth because they need us to do this. And it was a calling that was placed on me, and it's definitely something that I want to broaden out so that maybe we can be an example and help our youth. And that just takes off, and all the other counties start to do it too, and we wanna do it, do things in every single city in Miami County, so we wanna do one in Pickle, one in Bradford, one in Covington. You know, so if anybody wants to reach out to me, I'm Paige Liberty on Facebook, and they can message me on that. And one other thing I also wanted to address, I think I might have sent this article to a couple of you, but, um, there is a documentary out by Vice. And up in Michigan, a bunch of farmers were given a bunch of PFobs, and were told to plant them in their garden, and it was supposed to be good for their gardens, right? Well, it's not, so Upper Michigan is tainted heavily from the, from the bioengineering, uh, chemtrails are being sprayed right now, the aluminum, barium, strontium. All this stuff is getting into our waterways, and all Upper Michigan, all their bad water coming right down at us. I mean, you can drive right down twenty-five A and look at all those white dead trees from where the old nuclear plant used to be, and they're all dying. I mean, that's all of our water supply, and I mean, it's, it's documented out there, so. And I had breast cancer, and I went through and researched the amount of toxic chemicals that are in our food alone. Let's not e, not even go with how they're putting the hydrofluoric acid in the water that's the, um, they have, the EPA makes us put in our water. That alone is cancerous and toxic, and then you get the PFobs, all the forever chemicals, that's gonna, it's all coming down from Michigan, so. Anyways, I just wanted to, you know, maybe watch that movie on Vice if you guys need further information about it, but it's definitely coming at us from all angles. There, there's so many toxins, and unless you grow your own food, you're really not safe, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, Kim Heisler, just got a few things, it's not all bad. I wanted to reiterate what the, uh, the fire training committee said earlier, um, in trying to come together and, and give you guys a great solution. Frank, I hope you can work with those guys, um, and come together for something, because there's nothing worse than being appointed a position to try to do your best. And be, being set up to fail because people are not collaborating. And, um, face to face, I mean, I know you guys say that, you know, write the questions down and stuff like that. But face to face, I mean, you can answer like ten questions at one time and not have to go line by line. You can see the, the intonations or whatever from people and the reactions. And maybe they can't come to a, a good, complete conclusion unless you have all of that. But, thank you for trying to bring them together, and if at all, face to face is always gonna be better. So thank you, and hopefully. You look like you were sleeping there for a minute.
I'm just looking down.
Okay, so that's one thing, and then another thing you were talking about, I think, Tom, you brought it up, was the, um, the cameras and stuff in the room for the. Okay, so, ever since I started showing up at meetings, it has nothing to do with that camera, but my folks, my aunt and uncle, and all those guys are at home. You know, they're not necessarily connected to the internet, and they're like, well, we got ahold of it on TV, but we have the volume up to like a hundred, and we're whispering. So, you're so worried about that when people just aren't even able to even hear what's going on, period. So can we address that? I mean, we have technology, I mean, it's, it's silly to have gone on for, I don't know how long it's gone on, but I imagine years maybe. So if someone could take, um, responsibility for that, that would be great, so the rest of the community can, can listen to it, turn the TV off and not, you know, have their ears blown out when they turn it back on.
You're talking about this meeting or the, the fire committee meeting?
This meeting.
Oh, yeah, we've.
AJ.
Yeah, we've, we're aware that the audio has got some issues, you know, we've, we've talked about that.
Can we spend some money then, out of petty cash or whatever, to fix that problem? Because it's not just me, and if you guys are aware of it and haven't done anything about it, it's like, you're there to serve us, do something about it.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't aware, um, I cut the cable cord a long time ago, I know streaming on YouTube, the audio is fine, but is, is this something that we can please look into?
We've already adjusted and done microphone tests in here with the equipment that we have currently, we're switching over to Civic Plus, a module that's just for the commission meetings and board meetings. And so the, the quality should be increased when we redo the back room back there this summer. Uh, we're, we're, right now, we're just plagued with, you know, twenty-three-year-old equipment, but it will be upgraded.
Thank you.
So like maybe in a couple months?
Yeah, no later than the end of the summer.
Okay, a lot of people would be happy about that, thank you. Let's see. Just one other thing, I know we've already talked about it earlier, but the, um, the raising the limits from the twenty-five thousand, I know you guys did that. But if I remember correctly, when asked how many occurrences it happened this year, there was like two that was brought up, and they were way below that amount. So it's still really kinda suspect that it was being passed now when, I mean.
Sus- suspect in what way, what do you, what do you suspect?
Well, I mean, why raise it if we haven't needed it? And why raise it now when we've, is it that much of an inconvenience if it's?
Can I address that?
Six months?
Yeah.
And it's not happened at all?
Even though the insurance company pays, the way the code is written, it says, the city manager can't settle any claim over twenty-five hundred dollars. So if, uh, a person is driving down the road in a trash truck and happens to hit another car, or a police car hits another car. He technically cannot settle that claim without bringing it in front of the commission, a simple car accident. And, and it doesn't take much to get twenty-five hundred dollars in a car accident or anything. So the purpose of this code was to try and, and one, make sure we're in compliance with what we're actually doing, and so if there's a car accident and the insurance pays it, the city manager can settle it. Also, there's other minor, I mean, there are things that happen in the community where somebody's basement may ba, get backed up or something of that nature, that's a city fault. It just gives the city manager a. That was mine, oh, that, that just gives the city manager an opportunity to, to, to negotiate that without having to come before the commissioner.
Let me say something to you, and I'll let you know the final word on that, but I, I guess to kinda reframe your, your statement that we haven't had a lot of use, I guess I would question. Like, I've got car insurance, but like, how many times in the last five years have I used that to total my car, and it's, it's none, and I suspect most people, it's, it's close to none. Actually, the fact that we have such a small usage of it does give me more confidence that we can expand that range. Because if we were using it right up to the limit over and over and over again, well, I might say like, okay, well, there's clearly some kind of problem here that we need to, to keep better track of that. But actually, a lower utilization of the insurance, we need to talk about insurance claims, the fact that we don't have a lot of insurance claims, it's a really good thing. And so to reward that good thing, we're expanding out those boundaries a little bit. So it's actually, it, to your point, if, if we were writing it up against the line over and over again, I would actually be right there with you saying, well, actually, we need to keep it at a lower level to make sure that we're keeping track of this and figure out why are we having so many insurance claims. But I think the, the absence of insurance claims, like, like again, with the example of your car, how many times have you totaled your car in the last ten, ten years? Probably not very many, that, and, and your insurance company may have even given you a, a benefit for that on, on your rate.
I, I, I understand all of that from both of you guys, but how many times have you guys been called together to approve something that was over twenty-five hundred dollars?
Very often.
Right, not, how many, though?
I don't know.
Has it been one, two, ten? Because earlier he said none in six months, that's where my, that's where, to me, it seems shady, it hadn't been needed. So anyways, that, sorry, okay, so. I hope we can all get along, you know, just, I hope we can all get along, we're all adults, and we gotta set our differences aside and just, you know.
And assumptions, you're right.
Thank you.
Debbie Stein. First of all, I do want to say thank you for lowering that to the 25,000. Because if it was $75,000, which really wasn't needed, that's a new car. That just doesn't happen. So I think 25,000 is reasonable. It's still a little high. I'm going to piggyback on Kim. I'm not going to go any further on that. But I do want to say thank you. I also want to thank the commission for developing the burn committee. I know that I spoke in regards to three commissioners approaching me and asking me to be on that committee and then rescinding that. But I came to understand and I'm fine with that. Especially after participating, sitting and listening, I'm fine with that. I wasn't going to come to the meeting this evening, kind of being very selective in what I participate in. But I was watching a home with my husband and I saw the burn committee come up and speak to you. And I felt as if there was this force of you arguing, disagreeing. And I distinctly remember that resolution and I distinctly remember the conversations that were spoke amongst you, that you were giving free rein. You were going to work with the committee. They were going to be allowed to make these decisions. If they needed a special prosecutor, if they needed, whatever their needs were, you guys were very open to what they were going to do and how they were going to investigate. And the fact that the city manager has decided, yes, I'll interview with you, but just two of you, and that's understandable too, because of the three, the sunshine law. They're trying, you know, they're staying within their guidelines, to tell them that. And then to put restrictions on, you can't record it, and then to put restrictions on that. And then to say, no, I need it in writing. That committee had such a good viewpoint as just having a normal conversation with anyone. You get an understanding. You can talk back and forth. I know they said they had 300 questions. I seriously doubt that they're going to sit with a timeframe that was set by the city manager, was, I believe, one hour. I may be wrong, but I thought it was an hour. There is no way that they could approach 300 questions in an hour. And I think that those two individuals seem to be very reliable, very sensible. I know you all selected them. You put your faith in them. You basically told them, you know, you are going to be developing your committee and how you're going to approach it. And it needs to go back further too. It needs to go back to further city managers, further commission. Questions need to be asked. Whether you'll get those answers from people that aren't here is to be determined. But those that are here, that's a good start. And I want to thank you, Frank, for, you know, trying to say you're going to, you know, keep that communication open or ask that the city manager meet with those two individuals. Because they have a heavy burden. The citizens need a report that's fair to everyone. To everyone. Fair to employees that are currently working, past employees. I mean, there's been things like, we got to look at that past employee's emails to see what she had to do with the burn. There's a lot of mistrust and people don't feel comfortable. They want the results. So then seeing that, no, I'm not going to interview. You're going to do it in writing. You're going to write those out. I'm just asking you, let communication, let, even if one of you commissioners sit in or the law director sits in with those two individuals, let that process happen for them. Don't, please, I'm asking, don't be a roadblock to them because they're not going to get good, open communication to be able to go forward to the next person or the next, you know, this person.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I think that we should, I thank you guys for developing this committee. But we really need to thank this burn committee and they need to be able to take off and do what they need to do and not have stumbling blocks. You gave them that authority and I think you should respect them enough to let them continue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is now the, you know, the burn committee brought this up and a couple of folks have brought this up. And the important part here, there are two things. One, the questions get answered. And to get totally caught up in semantics of how they get answered, to be completely honest, I don't care how they get answered. I just want them answered. It's also my understanding and previous conversations between both the city manager and the law director, that he has not said that he will not sit down and talk with them. However, that the initial interview, because the amount of questions that were to be asked was so large, that that's how we got to where we got.
Well, tonight was the first time I heard the 300 questions. I was kind of shocked at that because I was like, how in the world could you get through 300 questions? But I do.
And again.
That back and forth, like what we're having dialogue.
Absolutely. But here's my point.
Sure.
Is that as long as the questions get answered, and my guess is, even if they sat down and talked with him, that they're going to want to talk with him again. So I don't understand why we're having such a kerfluffle here over how those initial questions get answered, whether they're via writing and a follow-up interview happens in person, or you get one shot at one hour with him. To me, this is just me. I'm not a member of the committee. I would take as many opportunities to ask as many questions as possible. Yet we are spending our time over procedural issues, right? How are my questions going to get answered? Who's on the other end of this camera? Why are we recording this? Why are we recording that? The assignment was not for a fair report, but for a report of what happened.
Well, I mean, basically, that's the truth. You want facts.
I want to know what happened.
You want facts. Exactly, exactly.
That's what it was. Not fair.
Right. Well, so, you know, a word is a word, but factual is what it is. And I agree with you 100%. But the idea that you did give them, really, you let them determine, and it was, if you go back and watch the commission meeting, you guys pretty much said, whatever you need, whatever you want. And the fact remains that.
And again.
The fact remains that the city manager did agree to interview with them one-on-one. And you're still arguing with what the committee.
I'm not arguing here. My point is.
It did seem like that.
The important part is that the questions get answered.
Yeah, but let them have that open, let them, you guys sit in, a couple of you commissioners sit in so you know that it's, you know, have the law director, have a commissioner, have the.
Now, back up here, because before, when this committee was created, it was from the folks who spoke about the committee, the point, they didn't want any commissioner involved. They didn't want any commissioner involved with this.
Didn't come from me.
Didn't want them.
I'm just making suggestions.
My point is that the rules here, or the ask from the folks, not on the committee, but from folks who show up at these committee meetings, the ask continued to change. One, they wanted it public. Now, two, they don't want it public. They want the camera turned off because they don't know who's recording it. If you remember when this thing was created, one of the things that was mutually agreed upon of the commission.
It's basically the same thing that's happening with what you're doing right now. I mean, that, like, yes, you can, yes, he can interview. No, he can't. Turn on the, turn on the mic, turn off the mic.
David, your time's up. Let him finish.
And if you look at the actual words in the resolution, it says that they are to participate and to answer the questions of the committee. It does not say how those are to be done. And again, we've spent now well over 45 minutes talking about semantics as to how these questions get answered. And what I've asked the city manager over here, you guys keep changing on me, and the law director, is to work with me and with the committee. And Nancy's still here and I know David has left. But to figure out a manner in which we can begin to start getting these questions answered.
And that's fair.
That's all that I want.
And I just want it to be respectful to the committee. Yeah, be respectful to the committee. And I said, I do thank you for developing that. So I'm done.
That's who it's for.
All right, thank you.
Jeff Grimes. Once again, no more burning anything at 9300 State Route 66. Has there been any training going on out there?
Yeah, they've had several training.
Yeah, there's been training out there, yes.
And has there been any burning?
No, any burning, any live fire training has been notified. And that happened a month ago whenever the notification came out.
So I had seen that now they're wanting to put a concrete pad at this location. And I'm asking that nothing be put out there until we get answers from this committee. And I want to thank you guys again for starting this committee. And the only thing that we want is the truth, no matter how that comes out, no matter how long it takes. It's not rocket science, guys. They burnt lithium ion batteries out there without the proper permits. If I was to do something like that, I'm pretty sure that I would be treated differently. So I have a lot of people that ask me to come and speak for them because they are scared of repercussions for speaking out. And one of the things was, is we're all concerned about going green and taking care of the environment. But now we've got this thing that we have to wrap all of our stuff, these couches and stuff in this.
Mattresses.
Saran wrap. And I'm wondering when we started that process because I did some investigating on what actually plastic wrap does. And I got this directly from National Geographic, so maybe they will be considered credible. But plastic wrap contributes to a larger plastic pollution crisis. It is very difficult to recycle and it's made from harmful chemicals, especially as they break down in the environment. Those include PVC, PVDC, and they release a highly toxic chemical called dioxins. So I would ask that you guys look at why we wanted to do this. I know you said that it was to keep the trash guys safe. But I feel that there would be a better alternative into, for trying to reduce the stuff going into the landfills. The dioxins, they don't even know what this does to people. And the city did not test for dioxins at 9300 State Route 66. And I think that that was a big mistake. So a couple of other things is we do all this stuff. We put veteran flags up and we say that we want to take care of our veterans. But I've had probably a half a dozen veterans contact me and they are being given all kinds of code violations by this town. Also, some disabled people have been getting all kinds of code violations. So you can't talk the talk with the veteran flags, but then go around and threaten these people with court and fines. So when I was doing more investigating, I wanted a copy of the code violations that the city of Pickle has. And I was told that they are on the internet, but I don't want one on the internet. I want a physical copy. And they said that there was over 300, either 300 codes or 300 pages of code violations. So I'm assuming that that's just, that's crazy. But I would want somebody, if possible, to give me a booklet that I can look at these code violations.
Do you want the codes or do you want the?
30 seconds.
I would like a copy of the codes, if possible.
Yeah, and I believe your email, they responded to you that it was about $100 to get copies of all that through the FOIA.
If I've got to pay $100 and I got to pay $100, I don't think that's right. Because that should be something that should be given to the citizens if requested. I don't want it online.
All right.
You just talked about environmentalism. You want to print out 100 pieces of paper?
But I want to be able to, sometimes where I'm at, I can't get on my phone because it doesn't have good reception. So I would like a physical copy of it. So my, the phone's going off.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The meetings that we're having at the Fort Pickle Plaza for, you're having a commission meeting on Thursday and we're having these committee meetings.
I don't think, we're not.
We're not having a commission meeting.
Well, the state of the city.
That's an event put on by the Chamber of Commerce, isn't it?
Yeah, the state of the city is put on by the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
So now do the, does the city charge, or does Fort Pickle Plaza charge the city?
Who's putting it on? Who's putting it on?
I don't know. I'm just asking.
The neighbors putting it on. They're the ones.
Okay, so they're paying for it, but what about the burn committee?
The what?
The burn committee. When they're taking those rooms, are those being billed to the city?
Yeah, they're a city entity.
Yeah.
But the city owns it, so it's kind of like, in theory, we're billing ourselves to be in this room right now. But there's no point in actually billing ourselves because we own it.
So my question would that be?
It's reserved with no charge.
Thank you. Reserved with no charge.
Reserved with no charge. Okay, that was another question people had for me. So then.
Last one.
Oh, five minutes is not long enough.
Well, that's all everybody gets.
I didn't get a bunch of questions answered from the last time that I was up here and had five minutes. Have you heard anything about Moat Park, Hans Pavilion, the old library, the city owned?
Your time is up, Mr. Grimes.
Of course it is.
It is. You got extra time even. So thank you.
But you still didn't answer my questions from last week.
I did answer your questions. Look on the, did you answer them?
They've been answered several times in the Q and A. It's included in the agenda packet.
Yeah, look at your agenda packet.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Yeah, I did.